This is the regular meeting of June 15, 2021, of Harrison County Board of Education, and we will stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Special recognitions and presentations, we don't have any today. Delegations, we actually have a delegation form from the mayor of Lost Creek, the Strahl Ovario, but after speaking to him, he has some questions to ask about Lost Creek and the buildings there, so I thought it more prudent because if he does it as a delegation, he's going to, we don't generally interact, so I'll hold that until superintendent's update, let him ask the questions since he's going in an official capacity from the city there, if there's no objection. Brings us down to the superintendent's updates.
Okay, yeah, we have several things. We wanted to update you, first of all, on, we've got our summer school program started, it actually started on Monday, and we're working, there's a few little glitches here and there with the feeding program, and not major, wasn't major, there was a couple of things that Chris has worked out with the cooks, and we knew that would happen. We've got 1,400, 1,400 students, we thought we would have 800, and we're at 1,400, and we're telling them, I mean, we had several that just came on the first day, and we've accepted them, and we're finding a space for them. I just heard that there was something going on at West Milford with the, yeah, so hopefully, I mean, this is the first time we've ever ran a summer program this large, so we're working through some glitches, but so far it's went smooth. I think the bussings went, went well, working through some of that, but pleased to see the numbers, pleased to see that we've had as many numbers. We are seeing the courts ordering some kids into our summer programs.
What's that number?
There's over 1,400, yeah, over 1,400.
Awesome.
So, and of course, when you have kids in the building, there's always the same kinds of things when you're in school. We're working through some nursing concerns, and making sure that the kids have their medications and all those things, it's like operating our schools.
Well, so I think there's a little conflict with busing, you know, kids getting on the right bus, the wrong bus, because they're not on the buses that they normally would ride.
Yeah. The drivers are just using the buses that they're normally driving, so the numbers would never, would not match what the kids are used to having, and that sort of thing, but.
And I guess they put the number, you know, put their number on, well then the kid's not going home, he's going to Parks and Recreation afterwards.
Jimmy, do you have anything you'd like to add about the busing?
Well, we've had, we've had to make a few minor adjustments in the Parks Park area. There's been a lot of kids coming to, not forward, so more than anticipated, so we've had to do some adjustments, but we've been able to make this, you know, we had one extra bus that we were able to add to that area, thank goodness.
Yeah, that's a good thing.
But it's a good problem to have.
Yeah, the issues that we're seeing is because we have enrollment, we have a lot of kids going.
Does that lead us to believe that enrollment for the fall will increase?
We've actually, we've went up 327 students since we ended this, well, toward the end of the school year, and then going into next year. Mr. Kirby updates me, we've got a lot of students returning from homeschool back into the regular school setting, so we get calls probably every day for that, so it's looking good. I'm excited about what's, what's coming and what we're looking at, so, yep. The other thing, I think there was a request for looking at the academic decline that we have. And this is just a summary of performance during the pandemic, and Dr. Haig worked on this, to look at the district overall, and made some comparisons for the different cohorts. I mean, if you look, it's already diagnostics on the second page is there, the pink sheets. Is there anything, Dr. Haig, you'd like to talk about?
No, we did summary points on the beginning page there, and then the pink is just from beginning of this school year to end of this school year, for grades kindergarten through eight, and so you can see how each grade level progressed throughout the school year, of course, bearing in mind that at the beginning of the year, we had the interruptions of being remote as well as being face-to-face, and then we returned to two days of instruction, so that middle-of-the-year diagnostic would have been during that two days of instruction, and then the end-of-year diagnostic would have been after we returned to five days of instruction in March. So you can see that each grade level improved from beginning of the year to middle of the year to end of the year, but we do know that our growth was not anywhere indicative of what it would have been remaining normal school year, in comparing it to previous data. So you have that for reading and math, and then the other one that you have is interesting as well, it's the white copy, because what that did is it took your first graders, when they took the middle-of-the-year assessment last year, which would have been prior to the pandemic, and when they took the middle-of-the-year assessment this year, and so that's when it gets down by school level and the nitty-gritty of it, because you can see, that's your instructional loss. So if you've got a negative red number, that means that that grade level lost instruction from middle of the year last year to middle of the year this year. If you see positive greens, that means those schools and those grade levels were really pulling students, and despite the pandemic, they were seeing growth. So we did see that, and that's broken down by school for grades K through eight. And then the bottom is the overall district by grade level. So you've got two different comparisons there, looking at how students performed middle of the year last year, prior to the pandemic, and middle of the year this year, to get a little handle on the instructional gaps, and then the pink copy is just looking at that grade level from the beginning of the year this year to the end of the year.
Will they be assessed again in the summer school program?
Sure, so at the beginning of the summer school program, we gave each one of those teachers, every student that was enrolled, they received that student's most recent diagnostic that they took to get a baseline of where they were at. That's what we'll have to submit to the state in October when they ask for this data, and then when all of our students return to school in September, they'll take that beginning of the year assessment. So all of those were face-to-face, that's the positive, when they took those, so we have some reliable data there, and we didn't want to give them a pre-test and a post-test during this five-week program, because we didn't want them to spend most of their time testing on a computer. We wanted it to actually be rich instruction in small groups and interventions, so those are the two points that we chose to use, so we have that pre-test and post-test.
And we also are taking attendance every day, so, if you who's there.
From what I'm showing, it looks like we actually made some gains in some English-language arts areas and reading areas, but we struggled with math.
Yeah, if you would look at the pink sheet, our hope is that we always would get gains from beginning of the year to the end of the year, and so we did see those gains at every grade level, but what's important is those gains were not as significant as they were in the humbles of the year. Yeah, we're concerned about eighth grade in math, because they only had a 7% gain from beginning of the year to end of the year. We're also, if you look at seventh grade, we'd like to see more gains then, and if you would look at reading, language arts, again, eighth grade, seventh grade, and first grade, but that first grade with reading, they did not receive that critical face-to-face instruction from that teacher, and it shows, those gains were, there still were gains there, but they were very minimal compared to what we normally would experience in uninterrupted school. And then the white sheet shows the losses.
You know, I kind of look at it, under all the circumstances, as the guy's half full, it's a guy's half-full and half-empty, because, you know, hopefully we're not going to experience this situation, and so I think next year, at the end, if we have these same situations, then I really, I really would have greater concern as maybe we're not getting the job done in the individual schools. So I think we keep this and use it as a comparison at the end of next year, at the end of this year.
And also, I'm hopeful that if we have, if we give these kids a good enough experience in the summer academy, that it's going to be an every-year thing. I mean, if they're enjoying it, and we have enough other activities that are with that, you have the 1,400 kids, even if we could have 1,000 every year, you know, I think that's, I think if we.
And with the supports that we're looking at adding into the classrooms and the schools next year, we're still working on that plan with this third round of money for that loss, so there'll be supports that, you know, should help.
Well, I just think, I just think this, you know, is kind of present, the summer school program, like I say, is, everything out here, you know, is a positive, that, you know, this is great, that these kids now can catch up and, you know, get some extra schooling and everything, you know, for four weeks. It's not like you're taking away their whole summer.
That's what I'm saying, but you also have to make it interesting enough, that it is there somewhere, and you're going to have some that it's, it's something to do, and they enjoy it, so, and I'm really pleased that that took off some.
And the focus on, you know, reading and math, and then, of course, the parks piece, it was, it actually worked out well, working with Mike Book to add that parks piece, and to work within what we already had in place.
I commend our staff.
Oh, my.
They're so tired, they got the energy that we see at these sites, it's amazing.
When you speak with other superintendents in other counties, they've really struggled to get staffing at all, I mean, they've done a lot of creative things, and even are bringing in staffing, you know, for periods of time, or paying them hours. We were, I mean, we had a few areas that we did not get, you know, fully staffed, but we had enough already, we had posted enough already, and they really did step up. We had a lot, but we got a lot on that first posting, and then they really have come around and really are working, and it's because they're doing it for the kids, that's what our teachers do.
And my question is, now, the people that are working this year, will they have first?
There will be summer seniority established, all these programs, because we didn't have a lot of summer seniority before, we had some, you know, a few programs, but there is summer seniority established.
So, so first with one year, versus somebody new that wants to come in, they still have that priority over them.
Yes, we'll be working on that to make sure that we have that established for the next summer.
I think that's more than fair, you know.
I agree with that. Okay, we also want to have a facilities update, I think, from Mr. Lopez.
Yes, Lost Creek, we, as far as that, we did an extension through the school building authority until June 23rd versus the date of completion. That was based on some loss of time due to weather, a storm drain issue, and so, and then, so we just issued, so that was minimal, so that extended it 22 days. The elevator, the substantial completion date for that will be, and that's in the high school, that will be July 7th. So we're still okay, because we have a little time due to summer. We'll be fine as far as getting our new furniture moved in, beginning of the school moved over from Lost Creek, and that furniture this way, because we did make a purchase of the, what we're going to have our new bus lot right across the street, the old doctor's office, so we did close here yesterday.
Get my important signature, go to the closing site, sign one place.
And so we were transferred the heat, we'll be able to enter into an agreement with Dominion and get some of the area prepared, and that would give us time then to prepare the parking lot, or wherever we're going to use that area, the bus lot currently in this house, so that's a problem.
Jimmy, if you don't mind, we still have, you'll have an update on Jordan Gore and all that, but when you're done with Lost Creek, then we'll entertain the questions from the mayor. He just had a few questions asked, and I figured this would be the appropriate time to do this.
Okay, we did enter your son a change order for some widening and some changes to the bus split as well, and that is so that we can keep traffic flowing during arrival dismissal time, so we will have a backup on road, I think it's 131 there, we want to make sure there's good blood on Hawk Island. And I believe that's, I don't think there's anything else as far as the Lost Creek project.
Mr. Ovario, if you want to take this time, you want to be a good volunteer?
Either way. I'll just stand here. Y'all have done a tremendous job through what we went through over the last year, you're all to be congratulated for what has happened with COVID and all that. A few questions I've had from the citizens of Lost Creek is, okay, now we're moving to the new school, congratulations on it, what's going to become of the old school up on the hill, the Lost Creek building? We may not have the answers today, but we'd like.
You want it, we'll give it to you.
Sure, I'll take it. The school, I do not want, the answers I'll take.
No, no, we're not willing to give you that today.
Yeah, I understand, we would love to have it, but as a town, we can't afford it financially to maintain it like it needs to be maintained, and that's our fear, is what's going to become of the school, it's going to be like, and telling my age, I'm almost 65, I've seen what's happened to some of the other schools, that's been let go, and there's a fear in Lost Creek that that's going to happen.
That's our, if I could say, that's been our fear as well on any of these schools, we've always made sure that, that we kind of watched where they went to, and I think what your fear is the same thing we saw growing up, Doug, and see, they used to sell these schools for a dollar, and they strip them out there, and they sit there, and they, they fall to the ground, and I don't think we've done that. In fact, I had, I don't want to get, but I had someone contact me from Economic Development about a possible technical trade school that was wanting to go in there.
I would love that.
You know, so, I haven't heard anything, but, you know, they were asking questions about what we're doing, I said, look, everything's on the table, what we don't want to do, and we've made this, we've made a concerted effort with these buildings, we don't want to just put them on, up for an auction and let anyone bid on, because we don't want to, we don't want to put a tenant down there that you don't want to use now. That's not fair. We don't want it to sit there and go to waste, but we also, you know, they don't bring tons of money, so it's not worth the aggravation that we're going to get from putting someone bad in your town.
Yeah, yeah, I understand, and I hope you understand where we're coming from as citizens of town.
You will have input, I would say.
I was going to say, we'd have to form a committee and study it.
Now, we would give.
With involving the city.
We would appreciate that.
We would give input, I don't think anyone wants to leave you with a building down there, or leave you with a tenant you're not happy with.
Fantastic, fantastic, I appreciate the answer. Second question is, you have a parking lot down below that building, it's parcel 101 and 110. I don't know what your plans are for it, but as a community, we'd like to know if maybe you'd like to deed that to us, for us to maintain and take care of, and if the town of Lost Creek ever doesn't become existent, we would give it back to you all. We're working on some things like that with some other people in town, with some roads and parking lots. I'll leave that up to you all to talk about, think about in the future. It's just that little parking lot below there, Mr. Lopez knows very well where it's at, we've had some issues there before, and we'd just like to have it for the town for when we have events and different things like that, if you can take that into consideration. My final question is, we know the gym is in great shape, right? It's a new, fairly new gym, we'll say fairly new. Would you consider at any time, maybe, I know years ago, when I was younger and was able to do it, play basketball and that type of thing, would you consider renting that gym out if some of the citizens or something wanted to use it for that purpose? Of course, they'd have to probably sign some type of waiver for the insurance, we all know that. I didn't know what your intentions were for the gym either, because that's probably the best part of the building nationally, so, those are my three questions, if you could get back to me or answer me whenever, I would appreciate it.
Obviously, the older part of the building was gone, you'd probably take the gym.
Well, my, my, I believe the kitchen, it's been a while since I've been in there, the kitchen's right close to the gymnasium area.
It is.
I was thinking that, you know, if, if there's a place where there's a need, where if they wanted to have a birthday party or something, and, and using the gym and everything, kind of tying those two, two areas together, where, or if they wanted to have, you know, people wanted to have some kind of a, you know, goings-on in the city, when the city's having their festivals and things of that nature, they may want to utilize.
Or even, a lot of the, a lot of the events that you have, like the pancake breakfasts and some of the, some of those types of events that you have, I mean, why wouldn't, why wouldn't you be able to have it at the school in the cafeteria?
Well, we usually have those in the community building, we try to rent out the community building, but if it's a larger event, I could see them using the cafeteria and the gym.
No, I think you'll find that we'll be going to work with you to keep that, you know, as involved in the community as possible. As far as like, my, I'm concerned with the parking lot, I'm okay, other than, we have to look and see what we're going to do, because it, like I said, if there is a vocational school or something, once, they may want that parking lot, but it doesn't mean they prohibit you from using it, so I would say that any business that you would be comfortable coming into, there would be a good partner too, so obviously, you know, if it was up to you, if someone came in and had a use for it, that would be a win-win for both us and you all.
Yeah, for all of you.
But I can guarantee, this board is not going to put something up for the auction and walk away and let someone take it and leave you with someone without us coming down and having input, because we have to live here, he has to live down, I have to live down.
Yeah, you know where I'm at, all right? You know where I'm at.
Yeah, you at least got my word that you'll be, you'll be a party today.
No, I appreciate it, and like I said, these are just questions that I, that has come to me as the mayor, and I need to get back to the citizens and assure them that, you know, I did my due diligence coming in before the school board and talking to you all, and I appreciate your answers and your time, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Lopez, you want to update us on the Gore project, or, I mean, we could talk, I don't know, you want to talk about the Risa building?
There's, there's a lot going on.
Yes.
And a lot of asbestos containment, there's been a lot of demolition of the ceilings, the HDAC walls, there's been just a lot, a lot of work, it doesn't, and I don't know if you've ever been in a school, this has been renovated, but it doesn't look anything like the way it used to, but I worked there for 17 years. Anyway, the progress is going well, as far as the progress meetings, the construction meetings, construction manager, architect, and so those type of things have been going well. We've had to been able to relocate, move some of the furniture out, which has made it easier and more accessible to get that work completed. If you drive by there, you'll see a lot of the windows have been taken out, and it's boarded up, and it'll probably look like that for a while. As far as when the equipment is going to come in, it's still probably going to be a little while, and it'll come in dispersed, the availability of a lot of the equipment is, is, you know, it's a little timeout, so.
It won't be ready for the start of school?
Probably not.
And part of that is, is not even us, it's like Mon Power has to do something, and they don't have their equipment in until October.
Yes. The electrical upgrade was a huge factor in knowing that we needed to relocate some of the personnel and students. Mrs. Satterfield, I did know if you wanted.
Well, we, we've been working with Bo Henderson, of course, at City Window doing the work there, and we've had multiple meetings on what the progress would be, and then it just did get to the point where if they were going to get this, this building done and could get in there and really do the work that they needed to do, that it was going to have to be vacated. So that, we had the inspector come down, I forget his name, he came down, met with Joe, looked at the building, do you remember the guy's name? He was from the state, West Virginia Department of Ed.
Paul Edmond.
Yeah, and walked the building, and Joe explained to him, and had, had Bo there at the time, explaining the massive amount of work, I mean, they're really touching every piece of that building, ceilings, floors, there's hardly, I don't think there's any piece of it, as Bo said, that they're going to not touch. So we were looking at alternatives to possibly relocate off of that property to start the school year, and.
For, I guess, just to clarify, for the students that united?
Yeah, oh, yeah, just the united kids, because he, like he said, if he can get in there and it's vacated, he's going to get it done sooner than if he was trying to work around, and, and there really was no way, they didn't really have a good plan to even be able to work around the students, just because of safety concerns. So we have arranged to move temporarily into the old, the Risa building that's there, that was the Risa 7 building, it's been made available to us, we've had a cleaning crew in there last week, they're doing some painting, Todd is looking at a camera system, I mean, we'll set that up, so they will be in school with all the things that they need to start school with. Mrs. Satterfield has been there to look at the building, and she's figuring out the layout of that building, so we're going to.
It's a huge savings, because we had to buy modulars, they were bought a month.
We were looking at about 160,000 to purchase modulars, to put them in.
And if we buy the old Risa building back for looking forward, it's like 30,000.
Yeah, so.
Why not buy them?
Well, there is a, Miss, City Window, in order for us to get our, he needed to get into the building and start working, so in order, he was either going to have to put container-style things out there, start moving the furniture out, we were going to move it twice. So we had a meeting, City Window came in and met with us, and they said that they really could get their hands on that building much quicker than by the time we would do that, and he's giving us a discount, because we've been working with him to get the building vacated, he's really appreciative of that, so he's allowing us to purchase that property back for what we had in it. So what we sold, so we're going to.
And then we can resell it.
So we're not losing any money.
Okay, I thought he was buying it.
He did.
He was just going to.
But he does not wish to, to hold it for a long time, a long period of time. He did that in, so that we could get our stuff out of Gore quickly, and he could get us the keys quickly. So that, that is the plan right now, if you, if you guys need to think about that.
And then we'll decide if we want to resell it again, or whatever.
But we won't take.
We're back at zero.
Yeah, we won't take a loss on it.
We're actually saving money over modulars.
The modular was the other alternative, we looked at different things, we even went and looked at the Lost Creek building, thinking that maybe we could possibly utilize that building once it's vacated, but it's just the distance, and they, these kids are, it's the, it's the location and the busing and the distance there, and that Risa building seemed to be the best option, and it seemed to work out, he's been a great partner so far, really, to work with us, so, but that's, that's the plan.
I misunderstood the, they.
And they didn't have a naming of that building, I don't know that that's been made public, but the faculty, both faculties voted, and the, the kids in the buildings voted on that, and it's going to be Victory, the Victory Bobcats, it's going to be red, white, and blue, kind of in homage to Victory High School, and it's all that same area, really, it's the same area, and they wanted, they, yeah, they wanted to stick with, there was a panther and a cougar, and there was the blue and the white, and the, they had similar colors, so the red, white, and blue seemed to work, and it went with Victory, and Bobcat was a cat, panther, cougar, so that's kind of, and it was a simp, I mean, it was a quick, it seemed to be like that was what it was supposed to be.
They were a team, right?
Yeah, so it's going to be the Victory Bobcats, red, white, and blue, feeding into Liberty, which is red, white, and blue, and Mount near Middle is blue.
My family all went to Victory, so they were.
Yeah, we were Victory people.
We're the Gore family, members of the Gore family.
The Gore, I did speak, I spoke with the Gore family after that decision was made, he just told me to etch somewhere in the very bottom on a brick, AKA Gore. He was being funny, but anyway.
And that's a flagpost, too.
And two notes to the two principals at Adamston and Wilsonburg for really coordinating And, and two notes to the two, uh, principals at, at Adamston and, and Wilsonburg for really coordinating that. It was a smooth, I mean, they, they worked with their, their kids and the staff. It was very smooth. And then when they, it made it much easier. We were kind of under a deadline because they were starting to order. Uh, City Window needed to get some orders in. And he was ordering things quickly because of the lead time. So, he needed to know colors. So, they did a nice job of really just, you know, selecting that and getting that underway. So, that's our plan. Until someone tells the staff for that.
And I guess to, to your point, technically, I mean, Bud bought the building and technically we haven't bought it back. So, we, it's still taking both of us to buy it back from him.
Right. Yeah.
I wouldn't want to leave him holding the bag, but yeah, we haven't. I just want you to know.
We'll see what kind of work he does.
Yeah, we haven't spent any money for the building. So, technically, we can say we don't want it. So.
No, I mean, I...
And I understand, yeah. If we went to buy it, we'd be three months before we could close.
Well...
Good job.
Good job.
Anything else?
No, well, I have a, a couple other things. Um, I have Mr. Oliverio, um, the other Oliverio here. David Oliverio was wanting to just kind of give you a little preview of our webpage. He's been working on it. There's a lot of building and time to create a webpage really from the bottom up.
And we have a lot less time to do it than we had originally planned for. Uh, we were planning on launching in, you know, early August. We're gonna have a website on July 1st. Uh, so that moves our timetable up massively. Uh, but I wanted to show you just the, the homepage and the per, and maybe one or two pages that I have done. This is obviously not it. This is our, I don't know how to make this stop blinking. This is absolutely annoying. This is a new homepage. It's gonna be terrible for C-Dr. It's really annoying. It's not really ADA compliant yet. Uh, so this is the old homepage. As you can see here, everything's very stashed here. Uh, we have links and we have some stuff on the bottom here. Basically, right here is the only thing that's updated on a weekly basis. Uh, if it's updated on a weekly basis, that's depending on what we have to say. The new website will be more of a living, breathing entity. This picture right here can be a rotator with links. As we come down here, we have...
Those are our students, by the way.
Yes, these are our students. This is actually one report, middle school. Uh, I visited there for one of their, their end of year celebration. Uh, the bottom of those cups had holes in them. It's, it's a cool trick to play on kids, uh, as they, you know, bring around water in their cups. Down here, we have facts about the district. These are district-wide facts. They can be anything that we want them to be. And I'm not, Todd, I'm not really getting much of a connection down here.
I'm playing really fast because I can stay in this too.
This, uh, live feed, um, and I'm...
I can't watch.
Todd, can I get in on this computer? There we go.
So much better.
Yeah. So much better. So I'm probably studying for sign language. Um, okay, so everything's loaded. Wow, I'm done, honestly. Down here where you see live feed, uh, that will be stuff that we post to social media. So, this website is a one-stop shop. When I post something or when anybody from a school, because we're going to have at least most of the schools that are, uh, joining in our venture, when they post to their social media, they'll also post to the website. It's gonna be an easy flow. Everything's going to be connected. That keeps all the pages updated. That keeps new content on there continuously throughout the week, throughout the day, throughout the month. There's also, and I can't leave there. We go, it's sort of loading here. At the top, there will be a news feed. And I do apologize if it's not loading. It absolutely just loaded about five minutes ago. This is on the backend of their, of the Apogee, uh, page. So, something might be slightly buggy. Right above live feed, there'll be a news feed. These are news articles that I've put out, um, such as so-and-so from this school, uh, won this award in FFA. Those types. So, so they, actual news feed. In live feed, those are your social media posts. Um, those are your quick bits, your one-liners. Here's a link. Uh, I posted, and I do apologize, right now on this, uh, the first live feed is watch live Board of Education meeting. Events. That is a calendar that syncs directly, can sync directly to our K-12, uh, email addresses. So, we do not have to create another calendar for a website. It automatically will sync. Once that setup is done, setup takes about 10 seconds to do. You can select which calendar that you want. Boom, it's on there. And you don't ever have to go back to the website to update it. All you have to do is update your Outlook and it stream lines all the way to there.
And we have, and it can be events anywhere from, um, I don't know, registration for kindergarten to football game.
Anything you want. Uh, whatever you put in the calendar, it goes on the events section right here. And that's, that can be per school also. So, right now, if you would, uh, I don't know, let's see, let's see all events. Yeah. So, what I did on the backend here is I just connected it to the US calendar from my Outlook. Now, if I would get it to Johnson Elementary's page, that wouldn't be on there. So, we have that ability to really differentiate what calendar goes where. And this all, by the way, our app, which will be a brand-new app, everything from the website goes onto the app. So, you don't ever, it's not just a click. It's not a link that goes to the website. It is an extension of the website in, in true sense of the word. So, when parents go in, they'll get their school. Boom, all the events are right there. Uh, lunch venue's there. Everything's right there and it's all from there. So, if we go to our, I will show you one page that I did. This is, of course, our own website. If you go to the About Us section, we have here, now, this is indicative of most of the, uh, pages on our current website. It's a lot of text. It's a lot of reading. There's no real visuals. So, what I've set out to create is something, and I'll go over this menu system. This is our About Us page. We'll be moving forward. Nice video on the front right here. If you scroll down, you get a much more vis- visually appealing layout direct with, or connected to maps. Uh, if you would just click that, you could call and you'll be able to do that from a phone also. Come down here. So, this layout, this is all custom work that I'm doing on the backend, which is what is going to take me the longest time as Apogee pulls everything over. This is our new menu system. As you can see, it gets a little bit overwhelming, uh, right now because they're pulling over everything from our current menu system. So, I will be meeting with people over pretty much hopefully every day throughout the rest of this month on how to clean this up, make it more easily accessible, what links are dead, what needs to be changed. And then changing over all of the text over to something more visually appealing.
Does this have, like, we're really ran into troubles within our schools. They got pre-game registration or thing goes online. Is, is this website offer those type of things where we could make easier transitions and more fluid?
I, I have seen, uh, a lot of, uh, some peo, some schools and some districts use this website for registration. I believe we can create a form that may allow that. As far as payment, I don't know if they would handle any payment issues. I think, I don't know what we currently use.
We could have a, we could have a link to where we do.
Yeah.
Scroll online.
Yeah.
It would have a different circus though than, than, than the website.
Right.
But it would be, but we can make it as easily, you know, as easy as possible. Uh, this, for this type of website, almost the sky is the limit. We can do whatever we really want with it. We have full control over it, uh, to create whatever we can, whatever we can bring from, honestly. Some things take a little bit of time. That's okay. But we can, we can hash it all out. At the bottom here, we have programs. Every school will have this and have this ability. This is a rotator. So, where we can, every single school, and I'm working with every single principal at every school on how to, what programs they want to promote. Uh, they, a lot of the, you know, some people are on vacation right now. Some people are just not there. But they've been, you know, great with working with me on what programs do we want to promote uh, for their particular school. And again, this is all stuff that we can, you know, if somebody get, if I'm advised, hey, I don't really want that out there, let me get rid of it. It's super easy to get rid of. Only takes a few minutes. At the bottom here, we have spotlight. Spotlight, and again, it can be anything that we want. I've chosen to take a couple pictures from some board meetings and put that on there. Schools can do a student of the month. Anything they want. Employee of the month, teacher of the month, whatever they want to, they can put it there. So, it can be used as however they want. I'll show you the schools. All you have to do is click schools. And we have all the schools in order. We go to, Park District has been great working with me. Providing me everything that they want to stay there. And then at the bottom here, this is what they wanted. Now, the eagle also, the eagle logo is there. It's a placeholder. It's a placeholder for me to be able to get to the schools and take quality photos, uh, of anything that they want and then get those on there. But now, a lot of times you're just going to see a logo. So, we can actually get good quality, not just from a cell phone or with a shaky hand. And there's someone who really knows what we're, what I'm doing, put it up there so that you can get the right lighting in there.
Are, are you working with Ken Oster, like, if we'd have a code red that has...
Yes. So, this also replaces our alert system.
Okay.
Um, and everything's done on the backend of the website. Uh, I believe, leave everything that school messenger did, uh, this website did. So, voice calls, text messages, all, all of that stuff, uh, they can do. And that's all, again, from the backend of the website.
I think the key right now is making sure that our menus are what we want them to be.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? He's trying to, uh...
Go back.
Just get the bones of the website correct. But that's not something you want to, once it launches, change. The rest of that, things that, all the things that he's building, because Tom is, he's working on it. But we've got to get that menu correct.
This was updated today with about, I don't know, 20 different links. As they continue to pull stuff over, they're continually updating everything. But again, they're just pulling over exactly what we have and then throwing it on the website. Then it'll be up to me to get in there, get dirty, and fix everything that we need fixed locally. Superintendent Satterfield has been great with kind of directing me on who to talk to and, and really kind of moving the pieces around so that we can get this all hashed out in, in a time of fact. Any questions?
Nope. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
The next one, Joe.
Absolutely.
We, we have a United Technical Center up there. We were there last week. We're, you know, every day starting to run together.
Yeah, I know. That's what I said.
We were there last Friday. It was a quick meeting.
Yeah. Yeah, it wasn't. I mean, it, it went pretty quick.
Well, there was hardly anybody there. We had several out.
Yeah.
It was just really the business. He did the vendor, the, the business, yeah, vendor accounts. There was no new business on that meeting, huh?
Indeed. One thing was, was it the nursing program or something where there was going to be ones moving up and then...
Yeah, there were some personnel issues, yeah, that he switched on the agenda. Yeah. Couple employee, um, there was a leave of absence with an employee. Um...
It was kind of the end of the year.
Mr. Goddard is still on.
Personnel season.
Yeah.
Maybe.
And I don't, I think that's it. I think that's all we have. Unless Doug has anything else.
Nah.
He didn't even have that.
I usually write down for Zedland to stipulate, but there isn't anything in my notes.
All right, that moves us down to approval consent items. There's our motion.
So, uh...
Second. Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 Post. Motion carries. Uh, new business. New STEM one elective to be offered in Harrison County High Schools.
I'm making a motion to accept the application presented for the STEM initiative for 2021, 2022.
Is there a second?
Second.
And this is for submission to the state.
Correct.
Okay. Uh, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion carries. Uh, 2021, 2022 board meetings. Those are pretty standard. We have to approve them. And of course, they'll not look like that by the end of it. So, that's just the first and third Tuesday.
Yes.
And any special meetings that we named a lot? Is there a motion?
Well, I need a discussion.
Aye.
Uh, I'm gonna be...
Okay, do a motion. These, these aren't set in stone. We just have to... Is there a motion?
I'm making a motion to approve.
Okay, second.
Second.
Discussion.
Uh, I will be taping on July 6th. If we can move that to a Monday.
Couldn't you just, couldn't you just phone in that, uh, meeting in California?
While our day is...
How about we move it a week? Because that's, that's July 4th week anyway. And, and people may, or may not be here. So, if we want to move it to the following Tuesday?
Thirteen.
If you'll make, if that's okay. Yeah. Because that's a holiday week anyway. So, we might as well just stay away from them.
Yeah, I just put it on there because that's...
Okay. No, that was, that's proper. And that's what I'm saying. So...
That was the problem.
And the rest of them we'll take as, as they come. But, yeah.
So, we'll change the sixth to the thirteenth.
Yeah. So, if you want, if we want to amend your, uh...
Yeah, I'll...
July 6th?
I'm in my, uh...
To the thirteenth.
Before Google...
Or just, you already made a motion second and, and we'll just note that.
We'll add it. I'll add it.
That's what the changes, July 6th to, to July 13th.
All right. Then are you going to leave the 20th alone or are you going to jump into the 21st?
We might as well leave the 20th alone.
So, it's going to be two weeks back to back?
Yeah, we do that. We've done that before. So... But that, that gets us away from having one door night holiday week anyway, July 4th week.
I got you.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion carries. And of course, like I said, we change them whenever we need to. Out of state professional leave request.
Make a motion to accept. Second.
There's been a motion and there's only one on there.
Yep.
Uh, motion and second. And, uh, and of course, it's funded by the US Navy. So...
Right.
Yeah. It's just a one-day...
It's a required training. He was required.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Post. Motion carries. Uh, renewal of Newzella.
I move to, um, renew the, uh, program of Newzella.
Newzella?
Is it Newzella?
Newzella?
Newzella. I gotta read a little bit better.
Okay.
Um, I'm making a motion to approve the new license agreement for Newzella with the addition of the Career and Technical Literacy Customized Collection for Middle Schools with 2021, 2022 squeaker.
But, okay, but, all right, all right. I'm sorry. I'll wait just a minute.
Okay.
I'll second, then I have a question.
And for discussion. And that's in the amount of $167,908.
And where, where is, where does this money come from?
It's, um, gonna come from federal programs. Um, we do Title I, Title IV, and, um, Title V if necessary.
Okay.
And we, and he asked that mostly because you sat here through the whole meeting. We thought we at least...
Ask a question?
No, 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 no. I just wondered if it was coming from the, from the, you know...
The new research funding? No, this is regular federal programs that have been...
And it is a program that you feels...
We monitor that. I'm sorry, I can't...
Yeah.
We monitor that regularly with the Newzella company. We have meetings with them and look at the usage. And that's why I kind of highlighted some of those highlights of what we look at when we're monitoring our kids using it, our teachers using it. at when we're monitoring our kids using it, our teachers using it. And one of the nice things, because you can use it online with a remote platform. I mean, it's all online. So like, if we're in remote instruction or when we're in face-to-face, teachers use it. And it also has the capability that aligns with our testing format in terms of annotations in the digital platform. So teachers will really using that at the end of the year. So, I mean, you can see that we have like 80 or 500 annotations in April when they were preparing for the test.
There's really something on there that relates to probably anything any teacher is covering. You can find something on there if they just need a small, you know, if it's--
Does this--
And it is requested every year. It was probably one of the most common budget request items from the schools that we get, so.
Well, I see that it's, on the topics that it's hitting, is it, is it hitting any critical race theory that's in the news because a lot of stuff is, I just don't want to--
Right. Where, because that's been a, not that particular topic, but there have been concerns in the past expressed from an administrator that we looked into. And where they get their news articles are like National Geographic. I mean, they have a lot of those sources. And so they have a variety of sources for that information. And so the philosophy is with that is to teach the critical reading and thinking along with any reading. I have not looked in if there's that critical race theory or not. I have not looked at that, to be honest with you.
I would like to find out how that, before I, I vote to accept this.
Okay.
Well, there is a motion and a second. And, correct? Yeah. Any, any discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
We'll get to that, Lance.
What about Kristen?
Kristen?
Hi.
Did--
I'm set up.
Okay. Moves us down to old business, no old business, no policy updates, personnel matters. Is there a motion?
I'm making a motion to approve.
I'll second. Moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Does this involve the, the jobs that are, you're wanting to--
Yeah, the administrative assistant, one over secondary, one over elementary. There's two job descriptions right here.
What about the personnel?
Oh, personnel I have not interviewed yet. We just, the posting, yeah, the posting--
Job description.
Yeah, they, yeah, I have not put that on an agenda.
These are the jobs you were wanting to--
Those are the new, and those are job descriptions.
And they're going to be, what do they, what do we call them, administrative what?
Assistant.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. So the other you haven't brought before yet.
No, it's not been put on an agenda. I had quite a few applicants for that.
What's that?
I had quite a few applicants for that. If you wanted to see, I mean, this is kind of a breakout. If you wanted to see, just that it's not costing, we're actually saving by what we've done this year in personnel. This is just looking at the administrative changes, the positions that's being abolished. And then we did, there are several positions that have been now placed in a different funding source.
So we don't know what these two positions will pay?
Close. I have it on there. They'll be a little over 100 probably for each position.
And that's, that's not paid. Is that pay or salary?
That's their salary. That'd be their typical salary. Depends on who gets it and years of experience.
Years of experience.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot--
We're still at a $330,000.
Yeah. And then a 6-0 FTE save.
Now, that's just for those two positions?
Yes.
That's not for the personnel?
No, the personnel position was already funded. It's just, we've had nobody in it this past year. That money was already set aside.
What kind of money was saved yet?
My personnel position, $92,000, I believe, last year. Around 92. Uh-huh.
Why? It also depends on--
Yeah, it also depends on years of experience and who bids and what their certifications are, you know, masters. But I just wanted you to see, I mean, this is just what's been done with administrative jobs.
Okay. All right. I just, I'd just like to see, you know, we, we, we're not Robin Peter to pay Paul.
We're, yeah, we're actually up--
We're saving 311 and then we're saving 224, correct?
Yes, because of the way those positions are now funded.
Okay. And then we're going to pay out?
And then we're going to, yeah, like increasing--
So we're still--
Yeah, three, three--
At 240s.
Okay.
Three, three.
Yeah, but I mean, after, but that doesn't even, that doesn't even include his personnel.
Personnel was already--
That's already taken care of.
Personnel really wasn't in this.
Yeah, we, while we've done with personnel, we saved the whole year's worth of salary.
Yeah.
Yeah. I just wanted you to see.
Yeah.
Did we have a motion or two?
Yes, you did. The motion was made by Michael and the second was by Mr. Hope.
Okay. And there's no recusal on here?
I didn't see any.
Any further discussion?
No, I haven't.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Board member comments. Mr. Goddard, nothing?
No, I'm excited for the summer program. I think it's a win and--
Dismissed or anything?
Do you have anything? Kristen?
Yeah, I'm good.
Mr. Hope?
I just, I think, I know that I've already had feedback from where people were out visiting the summer program, Donner, and, and everybody. I don't know who else is going out. But I think that's, that's good that, you know, that you're out visiting and people say, hey, you know, and see what's going on. And so if we go forward with this in the future, you know, we'll--
I think there's some buzz for it. You never hear about any summer programs.
And all--
You're sure you do.
And I think that, you know, maybe something needs to get out into the paper, you know, in a picture of kids, you know, actually engaged and things of that nature. I think it'd be pretty, I mean, because like I said, I know a lot of people were tickled to death that we went forward with a summer program and to get these kids, you know, some more help, you know. You've done my great--
Yeah, that's it. Mr. Vanna?
No, I just feedback on their statements with the summer program. Great job. And I would like to congratulate Dr. Hennig on her position, her acceptance of her new position, which are the best.
And my only thing is, we have the meeting on the 31st, correct?
The 30th.
Or 30th, June, there's a 31st. June 30th at noon. And either way, since we've already turned it into, just make sure you call me or I'll call you or whatever. Let me know if you can be here. It's only going to be one item, well, two if there's a person.
It's at noon. I thought it was--
Yeah.
I thought it was in the calendar.
This person--
No. It's always at noon when we do them. It's just to close out the year. It'll be no more than 10 minutes. So if you can't make it, just make sure you call in so we can get you--
We'll know on that date. If we do, if you bring in some personnel, we'll know where we sit, stand, what's going to have to go for, for the start of school. I mean, positions are--
Oh, yeah.
Usually we just do the final closing out of the books. But if you have personnel and he's done, we can obviously take it up then. But I don't want anything else on that.
Right. I just like to see where we stand at that point--
Yeah.
With, you know, going, you know--
And then we'll have a, a meeting very, well, no, we moved that.
Yeah, we moved that.
Right. So, yeah, but as long as there's, that's the only two items. It shouldn't be more than five minutes or 10 minutes. So just make sure, like I said, call in just so we have a court. I'll be here, I'm sure Doug will be here and maybe Frank, but if he can't, I understand it's a very quick--
Who's buying lunch after the meeting?
That's what it's dependent on, yeah.
Whoever's buying lunch after the meeting.
Okay.
All right. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So--
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Children of peace, go in peace.